And so you just keep going to that kind of like, yeah. And you need one out. It's a probably should bring it.
Uh, yeah, I will, but Cindy usually email me the PDF first, so I'll keep up my paper.
I'll leave an note too. We'll get there. Good morning, everybody. I've got ten o'clock. We'll go ahead and call it over.
To say we thank you today for the hope to bring to each and every one of us through the death on the cross resurrection and essentially the right hand of the Father. We thank you, Lord, for our community. We thank you for all the folks that we represent and that you blessed each and every one of them as they serve you. We pray that you'd give us wisdom today as we do the work of the community of the county. And we pray that you'd always help us to serve with our hearts in Jesus' name.
Okay, um, at this time, any person with business before the court and scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court no formal action would be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we can speak?
Yes, ma'am. If it's on a non-agenda item.
Oh, okay.
All right, uh, presentation and discussion department head, committee and board reports. I think you've seen all of those. If there's any department head that would like to speak to the court.
I would, I would. Sorry. It's been a crazy summer so far, so I didn't get my little monthly. It's in front of y'all though. Um, as y'all know, we started our summer reading program. And I am very excited to say that since May the twentieth, when we started registrations, every single day with the exception of Saturdays, we have exceeded a hundred in the library every single day. And, um, right now we have four hundred and sixty-nine signed up for the summer reading program. Uh, we've had two hundred and sixty-eight actually turn in time so far because they have to earn their movie ticket. And as of right, as of this morning, we've had one thousand six hundred and thirteen hours of reading turned in. So. And my, all of my events have had, had a hundred and forty-six kids at my kickoff event. I had a hundred and twenty for craft day. And I actually had a hundred and eighty last week for the, um, Adeline Zoo, which we probably won't do them again next year because I was telling them that they, they were kind of disappointing. The animals they brought were just, no, I could have found them on the side of the road.
Did you have the Chinese panda doll?
No, we bought a tarantula, a box turtle, a gecko, and an armadillo.
You see those every day?
I know, and save money. Anyway, and I've had, I had seventy-two teams signed up and I've had over thirty, um, participate in the programs and turn in time and all that. That is a huge number. Anyway, but y'all can see here, we've still got lots of stuff planned, but I just wanted to, since I didn't get it in, I thought I better give y'all an update that things are kind of crazy. In a good way.
Yeah, and I, I think you wanted to speak in the last meeting and I apologize.
Oh, no, you're good.
You're, you're doing good. I appreciate it.
We are trying really hard.
Anybody else want to? Joey, I did want to say I do like that new form you provided at the front of your report. That is, that is cool. I like it.
I do want to say for the health department, of course, all of the different departments have been very busy. If you read those reports, and I'm sure you did. The health department, I mean, senior citizen center actually received an eight hundred dollar per month grant from Spartan Transportation, which I'm on board of. And so I think that's great. They've been supporting them for, for a very long time now. That's where they get the best from. In that, very proud of that.
Okay, inter precinct project schedule and step. What do y'all do?
I want to speak to this. What the bottom line is done, and I want to thank precincts one, two, and fourth for all their help. Because it has become autobahn now. And, uh, worked out really good. When y'all's comes up, we'll be right there with you.
I've been working, I, I assume this is appropriate for this particular item, um, because we have most of the vehicles in, in the county. And so I've been looking at fleet maintenance software. Wow. Number one's expensive. Number two, it's, it's everything. I mean, we're, it, it's like we need something like Spartan has, which Texas dot actually tells them, okay, this vehicle is this many years or this many miles, rather than this is, we changed the oil. You know, we, we fixed the flats, we, we did this, so whatever, you know, so I'm looking for that. Similar thing that Spartan does, so that we're not spending a lot of money on fleet software that probably would be huge. Each one of us, let me keep records are already of the maintenance that we do on our vehicles. And, and the hours that we need to change or the miles we need to change. So if I can just locate that for pickups and tractors, uh, truck tractors. Then we, and cars, of course, will, will, that will work for us. So I'm still looking for that.
Okay, and I've been working on the fleet on the back end of that, what we've got and where it's at. I've broken it out, um, to all the different departments. And then I've got commissioners court and precincts broken out into one. Sheriff's Department EMS, because they pretty much maintain their own, uh, and then trucks and trailers. So. When I had that ready, I will get that to y'all. Got a letter from someone, uh, from Judy Moss. I'm gonna pass that around to y'all later to look at. Uh, and she, it's appreciation for the work done at the golf course. And so, um, and she also sent groundlings for y'all. So they are in my office. What's left of them will be in my office. I promise I have no.
That you know of.
That I know of. I do get distracted while I'm working on things, so. Anything else? Okay, um, we will move on to new business, senior center. Oh, yes. Yeah, let's go back and approve the previous court minutes. I apologize. All right, we'll go ahead and go to senior center donations and new, new business. Uh, donations totaled fifty-two thousand and forty-two dollars. And you'll, in her report, you'll see that, um, the, uh, let me go to it. You see, there was fifty-one thousand, um, for May Day. The top selling quilt, one of the livestock brands brought six thousand dollars. The other top seller brought four thousand dollars. Donations was fifty-two thousand and forty-two. Now we have Ernesto and Ernesto, I don't know who else you have with you for attack risk management.
I brought half a pack with me. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I wanted to, to address the court, to talk about our services, but also we wanted to take this opportunity, if this will get with you, to present a plaque. So fifty years ago, our pool came together. And this year we're recognizing the original members that made up that pool. And for those of you that may or may not know how we came about, it was an unfounded mandate, where the state required counties to, to provide workers' compensation coverage to cities, counties, and universities. Unfortunately, the insurance, uh, at the time, the insurance market considered us to be a high risk. So a group of counties decided to pull together and form what is turned out to be now the Texas Association of County Bridge Management Pool. So this year we're recognizing those, those original members. And this is a plaque that we would like to present to Scory County. So, so today we, we also wanted to, to talk a little bit about the services that the risk pool provides for you. Um, here with me, we have Mr. Steve Owens, your risk control consultant, Rita Five, your HR consultant, and our new law enforcement consultant, Mr. David Wyres. David's moved from Southwest Territory. And he's been assigned to this area, so we're very lucky to have him. David has a background in law enforcement. I'll let him come to you and tell you more about it. I don't want to take his thunder, but um, I do have copies of this publication, if you don't mind taking that. And that talks about the services. Since twenty nineteen, when I started working with Scory County, uh, I usually come in and visit with the judge, visit with your county auditor, visit with some of you individually. And, uh, I think we're, we're ready to continue working with Scory County. We would like to offer our services to help you supplement what you have already going on as far as state people, your employees. Uh, I think we talked about maybe some heavy equipment training. We would like to bring that, but there's other topics. And I'll let the experts, uh, talk about that. So, you know, we, we, we had some changes internally. We, we had retirements. We unfortunately, we lost one of our peers early in the year. And so we've been busy trying to get back in order, but I think we feel we're in a position that we're, we're back to our norm. And that we're very excited to do that. Also, we have, um, some regional workshops coming up. I think for you guys, the closest workshop will be either Monahans or Plainview. This is a one-day workshop. Uh, we're gonna have topics from HR, leadership, cyber, risk control. Uh, it's a full day of training, free of charge to the members. We would like to see as many of you guys come and join us. Lunch will be provided. And it's a good opportunity for you guys to interact with other counties, find out what is, what is working for them, what is, what is not. Uh, so there's a few changes on that. Uh, another aspect, and this just came up last night, uh, and maybe Steve can tell you. You want to talk about the safety equipment program?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll let Steve talk to you because I know you guys have taken advantage of this safety equipment program. I'll let Steve know about it. But I'm gonna let the consultant speak. Uh, I just want to thank you for your support over the years. It's been a pleasure working with Scory County. I let you guys know that I'm probably gonna be changing territories. I'm gonna be moving to the south, so there will be a new consultant. We hope to have a good one on hand, so we'll see what happens. But, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you guys, and I still intend to see you guys at the conference. Until the new replacement is in place, I will continue to be your consultant. But hopefully we'll have a new consultant for you in the, in the near future. And like I said, it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you for your support.
Good morning. Thank y'all for having us here. I know that you guys have a busy schedule. Uh, my name's Steve Owens. Like Ernesto said, I'm the risk control consultant. I, uh, haven't had the pleasure of meeting all of you, but I've met a couple of you. I've met with the auditor at the end of last year as well. And basically Ernesto had mentioned that we wanted to try to get some heavy equipment training on the schedule and some other safety training. Um, it's, it's been a really fast-paced year, so, you know, we are, uh, in a position to, to offer that. Guys would accept for your road and bridge guys. We're seeing a lot of, uh, those are just the natural areas where we're seeing a lot of incidents statewide, so we want to address that. I wanted to commend y'all on y'all's, uh, workers' comp loss ratio as well as, it's a good loss ratio right now. Y'all are doing a good job with your safety culture, so. Uh, one of my main jobs is just to assist you in any way I can in continuing that safety culture to make sure that your employees get home every day safely. And that's what I take very seriously. Um, so if y'all will allow me that, I'd like to get on and just, you know, get some training to work hand in hand with you to further that goal. Um, Ernesto mentioned the safety equipment program, so we are making some changes to make it better for you this year. And because of that, we've, uh, had a little delay rolling it out, but we, we've changed, changed vendors. Hopefully there's some more, uh, more items that you can, that you can purchase. And we got an email update yesterday on that, so in the next few weeks, we're gonna be having some internal briefing so that we can brief you better on it. But it will be opening up in July and it will run through September thirtieth. So that is on its way. I know that it's not the same as it was last year, and there will be some changes, but it's a much better program, we feel. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be here. Rita.
Good morning. I know that most of you have seen me here before because I've done some training. I've done some harassment training. So really my responsibility is to keep you from spending money outside, which is all of our goals. Um, sending money out due to frivolous lawsuits. So when I'm looking at your county and I'm looking at the claims and that sort of thing, I'm looking at your public officials. So I'm, I'm here to take care of you. So if you have any questions regarding employment, employment law, that sort of thing, um, I'm your go-to person. So what I was looking at is, um, I have done harassment training here and I've also done hiring and firing training here. But what I'd like to do is go back to employment law training. I don't, you all have not had that. I'd like to come in and I appreciate you all because you have allowed me to come in and do some training. And, and the training is really the best way to keep you out of the courtroom. And so, um, I also reviewed your policy manual, um, back in January, when I worked with your treasurer in April, and so I sent it to her. So, that's another part of my area is to make sure that your policies are all up to date, make sure that you all have all of the things that you're supposed to have according to what the law says in, in those policies and make sure that y'all are up to date on that. Um, I also do your, uh, risk assessment. So I'm gonna go in and when I do a risk assessment, I want to, you know, I'm looking for particular things. I'm looking for, is there a common denominator for things that you're paying out for? Such as, do you have a driver that possibly is wrecking a bunch of cars or something like that? What, what is that I can bring to your county that will help you in order to stop that money going out? So, um, I do the risk assessments. Of course, I'm a, I also, uh, confirm with your sheriff and your, um, and anyone, any elected officials that call in, to make sure that they know exactly, you know, when they're having issues with their personnel. And I will tell you, as elected officials and department heads, your hardest job is managing people. And so that's, uh, I've had nearly close to fifty years of experience. And so, um, I think that that's a good thing that I'm able to bring to the team here. We have a great team. Um, if I don't know what the answer is, I'm gonna go to one of my guys behind me. Uh, we do work as a team and, and we really have a solid, solid team. So, and if you have any questions for me afterwards, I'll, I'll be here. So, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. As Ernesto alluded to, uh, my name's David Wyres. I'm new to the area. I've come up, I've been in Southwest, on the border region for the last eight years. So new to the, what we call the Panhandle region, so still kind of learning it and learning there's a lot of long driving. Anyway, I want to say thank you for what you do. I know it's a tough job. And as a former sheriff, I love coming before commissioners court, not asking for money or begging forgiveness. What we do in, in the LE consultant job is we work with your county law enforcement to reduce claims and mitigate risks, just like all your consultants do. We typically do that through in-house training, working with the jail staff, a little bit with the deputies. Really kind of focus more on the jail because that typically is the county's largest source of liability. We do that through training, technical assistance, and most importantly, policy development. So they have a good, strong policy manual that will back up decisions that are made. Um, also, some of the other things that I do are mockets jail inspections. So we'll help come through and get ready for a jail inspection, give some advice, maybe point out a few things. Or if they're in great shape, tell them they're in great shape. Um, also, we provide driver training, law enforcement driver training. Can do that through classroom, which I would teach, or bring in our simulator, which is branded, uh, just been renovated, rewrapped, new technology in it. And that encompasses a classroom portion and then the actual simulator portion. Also, we offer some online training for your law enforcement and then also provide the mandated jail classes that they have to have, like suicide prevention and a couple of other things. With all that being said, I will say before this meeting, I went over claims from the sheriff's office, and I would like to compliment them. They are doing a great job at keeping, keeping claims right. Um, it really shows and it speaks. Comparing it to some other black-sized counties throughout the state, they're doing an awesome job. So. With that being said, I will, I will sit down because I can talk all day.
How realistic is the simulator?
The simulator is a lot, eh, well, let me say, it's much improved. It's much improved. It's still a digitized format, but it's, it's, I think improved over the old one. We also, in addition to upgrading our driving simulator, we are in the process of upgrading our use of force simulator and actually moving, we still have our, our standard response to resistance trainer. I'm sure y'all seen it at conferences. We're, we're gonna keep that in the field, but we're also supplementing it with virtual reality. So the deputies will actually have, your deputies and counselors will have actual headsets that they can wear and it's interactive. And it will respond based off their responses, their actions, reactions. So, um, and I've, I've gone through that and it is, it's pretty realistic. It'll get your, even an old guy like me, it gets your heart rate going. All right. Thank y'all very much.
One last thing, uh, I forgot to mention. So early in the year, Judge, we had mentioned about maybe doing a workshop here in Scory County and, you know, you, as you can see, sometimes we have conferences that it's not nearby. We just finished a workshop in Hutchinson County. It was very successful. We were able to bring in six counties. Uh, we would like to, um, follow up on that. If, if you guys are interested, we would like to conduct that on, uh, either quarter number three of this year or four of this year will be sometime November and December when we can schedule the meeting. And it's usually, we can do a half day, but we actually, in some counties, we've done a full day of training and we'll come in and we use our consultant as presenter. And it's a good way to, to bring in topics that may be, uh, maybe different for some of the employees that usually don't get to attend some of those trainings. So we would like to work with, with Scory County to see if we can make that possible. Is, is that something that we still would like to?
Yes, sir. We're absolutely still.
Okay, well, we'll get to work on it and, uh, will you be my point of contact?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you all. Appreciate all of them coming in. In a flat, that's, that's nice. All right, uh, we'll move on to the outside audit report for this year fiscal year twenty twenty-three presented by company. Appreciate y'all being here.
Well, thank you. We, we really appreciate you guys giving us time. Uh, I used to come here a lot, then there was there, and then there's me. So I'm the, I'm the new partner, uh, you know, in Scory County. But I was here a long time ago too, so I didn't have to carry you way back then. So we, but I just want to say we appreciate it. My, my role today is where you live in the territory can be faster. She knows the details better. So again, we appreciate it. You have the choice of your auditors and we just appreciate it and work. So thank you. I'll turn it over to Derek.
So, um, I started working on Scory County back in twenty seventeen. I think it was my first year, um, at Clunway. It was my first year to work on it. And so I've been with Angela this whole time and Misty for quite a while. And so, uh, we really do appreciate y'all having us. And so, um, this is what I'm gonna be working off of. There's a lot of slides. And we did send the PDF of the audit report, which is, I think, included. And so, um, I'll just start off. Uh, so, uh, an unmodified opinion with issue, which is just a clean opinion. I think we updated the wording in that letter. In previous years, we had, um, modified the opinion just because y'all are modified cash basis, which just isn't GAAP, which y'all probably don't even know what that is. But it's just a different, uh, type of reporting, but it's still, um, under the accounting standards. And so, uh, we switched that wording to where it's just, it's no longer a modified opinion. It's just saying that y'all are, you know, in conformity with the modified cash basis of accounting. Uh, there were no findings related to the financial statements, um, in accordance with government auditing standards. And so uh, we had no financial statement findings. And in, uh, twenty twenty-three was, uh, the first year that y'all had a single audit since I've been here. And so that was a state single audit under the, um, uniform grant management standards. They changed the language from Texas single audit circular. So, um, y'all did have a single audit. And I know we've talked to many of, uh, the commissioners regarding some different things that we saw. Uh, nothing was reported as a finding. We just had to get some extra documentation. And so we really appreciate y'all being so responsive and understanding and kind of like talking us through what we were looking at and that testing. And that grant that was audited was, uh, that new text doc grant. I think it was the same grant as before, but y'all just got quite a bit of funding in twenty twenty-three. I think an extra like six hundred and sixty-five thousand. And so, um, so you're gonna see that whenever we're going through, uh, the report. So that next page is just telling you what page numbers you can find, these different areas of the audit report. Um, so it's gonna reference you back to, to this if you want to go back and look at it later, if you get bored and you want some light readings, you know, I think it was like sixty-eight pages. Uh, so the first graph is your assets and liabilities graph. This is just for your governmental activities. So this will exclude, uh, what we consider proprietary funds, which are your EMS golf course, Hermler Water Works, and airport. Airport, yes. So, uh, so this is just your governmental fund. Uh, as you'll see, your assets have gone up slightly. There was, um, a swap in your pension. Last year y'all had a pension asset, which was like seven million. And this year you have a pension liability, but it was really offset by some deferred inflows and outflows, which is just how the actuaries kind of amortize that pension expense. And so overall, there was only like a fifty thousand dollar expense this year. And so you're really not gonna see much effect overall. It's just your, uh, you have a swing in your assets slightly. But y'all did invest one point eight million in some CDs and your cash was up eight hundred thousand, which had a lot to do with some of the revenues and stuff that we'll talk about. Uh, your liabilities didn't change very much. Most of that was just related to your debt payments that brought your liabilities down a tad. Uh, the next one is your assets and liabilities for your business-type activities. Um, like not much changed. Most of that decrease was really just really to your depreciation expense. Uh, your pension liability, as I mentioned, went from an asset last year to a liability. So that's the slight increase in your liabilities. It was a hundred and ninety-six thousand overall for your, uh, business-type activities. Uh, the next slide is your net position for your governmental activities. This is just what, uh, where your, uh, net position ended. For, this includes like your debt and your fixed assets on your governmental activities fund. Uh, those are on page fourteen and fifteen of that big audit report. Those two statements are your government-wise. Um, essentially it went up. Uh, most of that was related to your property taxes. Uh, y'all had about three million dollars more overall for the, for the whole county, I think, one twenty. Most of it was in your general fund. Three hundred and thirty-six thousand was in your, um, enterprise fund. And so y'all had a really positive year this year. If you look at the financials, y'all had an increase in your, um, proprietary activities and your governmental, uh, funds. And so it was a really good year for y'all. Um, the next slide is your, uh, change in net position for your business type. As I mentioned, y'all, uh, admin loan taxes were, uh, three hundred and thirty-six thousand. But y'all also had an increase in your EMS revenues of four hundred and fifty thousand from twenty twenty-three. So it was also a really good year for your EMS collections.
Can we see it on the screen?
Um,
It's a different report.
Oh, okay. They don't have that PDF.
Okay.
They don't have that PDF.
So these are just graphs with the, with the changes. Um, so your next slide is your net position of your governmental activities. This is similar to what we just, uh, looked at a couple of slides ago, but this just breaks it down between your investment in capital assets and your unrestricted and restricted. So your unrestricted, uh, went up 1.2 million. As I mentioned, along that added form, we also have an increase of six, over 600,000 in your interest income. So I think rates are coming back up. And that also doesn't include, um, any interest that was earned on that 1.8 million that was invested in the CDs. Those, uh, y'all probably know, they, uh, matured in April of 2024. And so all that interest was deposited in 2024. To my understanding, that's been moved back to the tax class.
Please put it back into the taxes class now.
So that interest will be accruing monthly, I believe. Um, overall, really good year in net position. I think all three categories increased, which is, you know, what you like to see. Uh, and your net position for your business type activities. A lot of that was just like I mentioned, your property tax and EMS. Um, your investment in capital assets went down just a tad, but y'all had $417,000 in purchases for those funds and, uh, 458,000 in depreciation. So it just kind of was like, you bought some, but you had some depreciation. And so it kind of stayed really close to the zero. Uh, the next tab is just, uh, next slide is just your revenues. Um, overall, your general revenue is up. Again, taxes and interest is the biggest, uh, increase from the prior years. And then your program income, y'all did get those, um, additional grants for, uh, from tax doc for Roden Bridge of 650,000. Um, the next slide, very similar. It's just a different breakdown of it. I'm not going to mention that again. I think I'm going to skip to a couple of, uh, pages to, uh, your fund balance in total. The fund balance is, uh, it's not government-wide, so it doesn't include your assets and liabilities. This is just your cash in, cash out, um, on your fund statements. And overall, uh, for your general fund and your Roden Bridge and your, uh, non-major funds all, all combined, y'all saw an increase of 1.5 million. Um, your expenses were pretty similar to the prior year, but as I mentioned, y'all still had those increases in, uh, property taxes and interest. And so, um, that's where you're seeing that jump. Um, the next one is, uh, your fund balance by type. The blue column is your major fund, which for 2023 also included your ARPA funding. Um, y'all have, uh, that 3.2 million is really, uh, sitting in deferred revenue right now, but I think y'all plans, uh, for EMS coming up. And so I know that has to be allocated by the end of 2025. And so it looks like y'all are working on getting those funds spent and have some plans. And so we're really excited to be able to get that in the works. Um, and then your other non-major went down a tad, but most of that was just due to that ARPA moving from a non-major to a major fund for 2023. The next slide is probably what you're most excited about. This is your government-wide cash position. Uh, y'all increased, uh, was about 800,000 according to this, but this does not include your investment. So, um, because the CD had a longer than a three-month maturity, it was, it's included in investments on your audit report. So you're not seeing that in this cash position. But in 24, that money's back in your cash. And so you're going to see this probably jump quite a bit next year. And so, um, so this is a really strong cash position. So y'all are going to, y'all had a really great year, as I mentioned. The last couple of slides are just our required, uh, communication. Uh, we didn't have any, um, changes in accounting policies. Uh, we didn't have any disagreements with management. This is just telling you, this is going to be in the separate letter that I'll send to Angela and she can get it out to y'all. She has a handful of down copies of, of that report also. Um, again, no findings on the audit, uh, for 2023. And the last slide is just saying that y'all did implement a new standard this year. It was subscription-based information technology arrangement, which is GAT 2026. Um, and so that's really related to, to software that y'all are, uh, paying for. You use that asset. So if you look at your financial statements on page 14, it's going to tell you, you know, uh, all of your, you're basically have an asset for the right to use that asset. And then you have a offsetting liability that are your expected, it's the present value of your expected future payments of using that software, similar to the standard, uh, that was, uh, last year for your leases. And so you have a right to use equipment and different things that y'all are leasing. And so you'll see those on, uh, page 14 of the audit report. And so I think the only ones y'all had were Tyler Technologies and LexisNexis that we considered significant enough to book those, um, assets and liabilities. So that's all I have for you guys. Y'all have any questions or anything for us?
Sounds good. We're in a positive situation.
Yes, it was, it was a really good year for y'all. Do you have anything more, Jeff?
No, I did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Karen.
And let anybody know if you've already been, if y'all want to, y'all don't have to hang around for the rest of the meetings. Y'all can.
Thank you all.
Because I know, I know how these get.
Thank you all so much.
Let's not go for everybody.
No, just. All right. Intergovernmental agreement with Dawson County. We'll discuss and consider this. This is, uh, between, uh, for housing inmates in Scory County Jail. Um, you all have that. And, um, Dawson County's agreed to it and it's pretty much basically the same. It, uh, the housing is $60 a day is the rate. And we've had this.
It's pretty much standard, isn't it?
Pretty, pretty close. Mike's already seen that. Oh, do we?
Yes.
Well, it's a blanket one up here at the top.
Yeah.
Discussing consideration. I'll give you a, yeah.
All right. So let's go back and. Thank you. Got that. I'll make the motion to approve the 23 final audit report.
Later.
All in favor?
Who lives the second on the, on the Dawson County?
We.
You haven't finished it yet?
I did.
Okay.
All right. Doug is.
And you is.
And give it, judge, the right to sign for the report.
Do.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, tax office remodel and estimated cost for that. I'm going to let Jan take over on this.
I'm requesting that we, um, are able to remodel the tax office. And for years that we've sat in chairs that are like bar stools behind the counter. And the reason being for that was because of the, the depth of the, of the desk up against the counter. Well, now that we have the windows, that we work the windows, um, we've, we've just outgrown our office. I mean, it's just that, that there's been more added through the years and we've outgrown the office. And we're, we're needing to try to renovate, to make space where we have room to move. I don't know. I mean, if you've ever been back inside of our office, it's very limited on the space of how you can get around inside there. And, um, we're, we're needing to, to get out of the, the situation of the, the chairs being in bar stools all day long.
Starting to have some back issues.
Do what?
Starting to have some back issues.
Well, there, I've got, yes. There's several that are, are having issues and it's becoming a problem.
And you said things have been added and you mean from the state?
Well, yeah, I mean, just that.
More work on your employees?
Yeah. I mean, it's just the, everything that we do. Now then, um, the, the windows will stay there. I mean, we will still have the three windows open. Um, once the, uh, web dealer starts, um, hoping to have a RTS station in that third window. Um, of course, that depends on what the, the state allows on that and whether that will happen or not. But, um, hopefully, hopefully that'll happen. We'll have that third, uh, I mean, at that third window, we'll have a, an RTS station there.
So could this be under capital improvements?
Yes. The remodeling would, the furniture would, the furniture would have to go because the furniture is removable and, um, could be taken out. The remodeling could be capital because it's a, it could come out of permanent improvement, 29. The furniture and stuff would come out of capital outlay, which would be the 5710 line within 499, which is tax office. So it would be broken. I mean, it would be broken down into different categories. Remodeling part of it could.
Desk and furniture, 20,000 will be separate.
You're talking six desks and six, um, um, file cabinets. And then two counter or cabinet things, which, I mean, I've looked at, I've looked up and I've, I've researched and, and tried. And I found some that were cheaper. And then, of course, you know, with you, you can't get them, but now then they're discontinued. So, I mean, it's, I don't, I'm not sure that it will be all of that, but the, uh, what we're looking at now, I mean, if you get a good desk that's going to last, you're looking at almost $2,000 apiece. If you find one that is, I mean, you can buy cheap desks, but they're not going to last. So.
You were looking at something and the one that was discontinued and you went and looked and found something else and the price was doubled.
Doubled, yes. Within a three-week period. Just whenever I was getting everything together, trying to figure out what, you know, what it was going to take to do.
How long is it going to take, do you think, to actually, did it, any, either of them give you, any of them give you an estimate?
They, uh, I think I can get it done in a week. If, but we got to have everything in line.
Right.
I mean, we're going to have to close the doors for probably a week. But, and that's having everybody set up in line to, to get what they've got to do done.
Right. So.
And, I mean, I've got to have everything here before I even start.
Right.
Because I can't start the process and not have desk to put in.
So potentially it could be three months down the road before you get.
Yeah, it depends. I mean, I've got to, I've got to get it all ordered. The desk that we're looking at right now, that I, which I say that three, four weeks ago, uh, were in stock. But this is, they're four weeks ago. I don't know that that's going to be. And you're talking six of them. So. This is, I've, it, when I get the ball rolling, it's, it'll just have to all be in, in order, you know, as far as getting it all in there at one time.
Right. So we'll have to do a budget amendment for the, do we have to do a budget amendment?
Um, you would have to do something for the 20,000. I mean, there, technically, there would have to be a budget amendment for both because we didn't budget anything in Fund 29. But there's funds in Fund 29, um, that would be under, like what we did last year for the, the security window and all of that kind of stuff. It would be that same line with that. But the desk and furniture would have to kind of, it would have to be a budget amendment because I don't think she has 20,000 any, an extra in any of her lines to do a line on transfers. So it would have to be a budget amendment into the 499, 5710. Because her lines, she's pretty tight on all her lines.
Yeah, she is. That's a busy place. Make the motion to allow the tax office to remodel. And there will be except furniture may be taken out of permanent improvements. Don't get started.
Go ahead. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Um, we'll move on to permanent improvements. I guess get a, uh, I'm not permanent improvement. Oh, my God.
You don't want me to get permanent improvement?
I'm doing this way.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, good. Go ahead and get started on that and look at the total costs and work on a budget amendment.
Okay.
And we'll get that proofed up next meeting. All right. Uh, proposals for salary survey is what we're going to discuss and consider. And I believe we only got the one. Never cut cords yourself, right? This is true. I did it somehow. But I, I've got the theory, if you're not bleeding, you're not doing the job right. I'm not doing it right. All right. So this is, um, a response to Scory County from PayScale for, what's for proposal? The cost for this is 28,100. Um, pay effective professionals, employees, reported data, comp experience, expertise, HR management analysis, peer global network implementation. And they're saying term is 12 months. I missed something. Can do this one of two ways. Um, I'm sure there's a lot of stuff in here that the attorneys can, I hope, Jeff, for the agreement. So what are your thoughts on?
I'd suggest we don't take any action until he does look at it.
Coming back next meeting, we'll let Misty and the attorney look at it. Okay.
No action today, but we did.
All right. We'll move on to declaring non-running vehicles increasing to salvage art material.
Had two pickups up there. How many years? One of them's been out there for close to 10 years. Neither one of them mine, I just get rid of them in my yard. One of them had the catalytic converter stall off of it five years ago.
I need to look up the disposition and the statutes. And the court can decide to forego. If you don't think there's going to be any formidable bids or, um, it's going to bring anything in the auction, the court can decide to forego that and declare it as salvage. And, um, I also believe, although this is not on this agenda so far in the future, but the team we did for the senior center, they're still sitting there. I think that's.
They actually traded them, didn't they?
One of them. There's still one there.
Okay.
All right. But it costs more.
Um, and because it, it does cost a lot to run the ad in paper, the number of town times, um, the cost, what we would likely get is going to not even be worth the cost of ad of peasant. So I did research it in the statutes to see with the disposition if that would be allowable. And there is a statute that I can provide to y'all for. Um, I did, I'm just busy doing all those big finders. Bring the statute up.
Sorry, Ted.
They're basically, huh?
Yes.
Well, yes, we've got.
And he couldn't trade them in when he tried.
Yeah. I wanted to get them there, but I had to load them up, haul them up there. Now I'm going to haul them away to bear deal.
I'll make the motion to, well, increase to, to salvage the vehicle with your second.
All in favor? Uh, now we'll discuss and consider Scory County's participation in the tech cybersecurity training program. Um, we do this every year. This year's a little bit different in that there, there is a fee, uh, $5 per user. We are required to have cybersecurity training. I believe this is still going to be cheaper than what we have looked at in the past. $5 per user. We are required to have cybersecurity training. I believe this is still going to be cheaper than what we have looked at in the past.
And from my understanding, they have updated it that where it's, it's going to be a little bit like more than just the blanket, an hour-long kind of training that you do, like it's going to be more interactive and actually hit the topics where we're seeing issues. We've had several cyber claims this year because of things that people don't really realize. Oh, watch them clip on that, and then they click on it and then it's sent out to, you know, all the email addresses. So cyber attacks are very, they're happening a lot right now. We're having a lot of claims across the state, across the nation, but it is something that's very important that we need to learn on.
We'll make a motion for that.
Yes.
So there you go.
Go ahead and tell your story this time.
Yes.
Once Jeremy gets back from vacation, I will get the, he was supposed to be working on an Excel spreadsheet with all the users on there so we could get that uploaded into the dashboard if the court approved it. Once we get it uploaded in the dashboard and we get the, everything going, I will send the link out to everybody where y'all can be able to sign in and start. Everybody who works on and does things on the computer or has accounting email has to do this. So pretty much all employees.
So what's the time of line?
I believe it's by the end of August this time. It says it on here, yes, August 31st.
Okay, all in favor? All right, road use agreement. IP number two and IP limited to best.
So this, this, the amendment first, it'll just say amendment to road use and maintenance agreement at the top. This is amendment to the former road use group that was approved by the court back before limited to solar ever began. When we did the tax abatement, when we did the road use agreement. So now they, they've asked us to do this amendment and what they've added in here is the payment. So I sent the money invoice back in January telling them what I felt like it would cost to remediate these roads. About 15 miles of roads and they're tearing them up more every day right now. Now, the best started about a month ago. And yesterday, we even had a guy from Mexico, I guess, because he couldn't speak English. Deputy that had decided to turn around because he thought he'd gone too far, high centered in the road whenever he'd come out the ditch and tore up the road pretty significantly. He was there most of the day and they finally brought a front-end loader. They tried to pull him out the rancher, it did, but a focal drive tractor couldn't do it. So front-end loader finally got him. I don't know if he picked him up or what, but got him out, but tore up the road. I do have some information from some of the guys that are working out there right now that they're going to start repairing the road as far as potholes and things like that during the rest of the construction of the best, which is the battery part of it, 84 units that are coming out there. So in this, they have agreed to the payment of $3.8 million. They want to make a payment of $1 million by the 30th of June. We agreed to this. And then before December 31st, they will make the additional payment for the repairs of the road. Kept talking to them. I've talked to them, I don't know how many times or how many people. They have come around and, and they've been very easy to talk to. It's just different people we've business with, but they have started, let me speak to some of the same people, which is really great and I really appreciate that. But I think this is something that will be enough money to go back and repair those roads that have been torn up or being torn up. So what I've told them, you can't just repair the damage. When you repair the damages, all of you guys know you're going to have a rough road. If there's a lot of potholes, a lot of edges that are torn up, you can repair them while you want to. You're not going to make them smooth. They're going to, you know, shake you every time you go down through there. And so I've told them that you're, we're going to have to mill these roads and double chip seal them. And they, they've agreed that that's what needs to be done. They said they want to be good neighbors and they have helped in our community a lot already. This is something very dear to our hearts, is our roads, of course. And so I would certainly ask you to go ahead and approve the amendment there. Then this, the second one is the road and maintenance use agreement for the best, for the battery storage facility. And this is one that we haven't, we've never come before this court. I sent it out some time ago. They looked through it and they, they've gotten everything written in there that we wanted. The county attorneys looked at both of these. We went back and forth several times. And I believe it is a good agreement that the county attorney does too, that this will be taken care of. And so if this construction company doesn't take care of the, of the 2.8 that's left by December 31st, the parent company, Intercept Power, said that they would make good on, on payment. So I think it's a good deal. So I'd make a motion that we agree to the amendment and to the road use agreement for the best part of, for limited to best. Thank you.
All in favor? All right, we're moving on to tax abatement applications. So this is for canyon storage LLC and flatline storage LLC. These are, and they're for best also, each of them for best, 100 megawatt, 400 megawatt hour. The, I think that one is a little larger. One value 110 million, the other value is a little higher. 115 million, so they're very comparable. Those will both be increasing three. And there's a map somewhere. Of course, we would have to set hearing dates to our 30-day notice and all of that. It's already reinvestment zones, so we don't have to worry about that. Looking at August 6th. For the public hearing.
Will you be abstaining, Sean?
Okay. There was one thing I would suggest that we do before, when we do the abatement, that we would in tandem do the road use agreement right.
I agree with that, yeah. I agree. Okay, I agree. We usually do that, and I don't know how that one got missed on that, on that one.
Yeah. I'm not either, but we just want to make sure we did.
I'll make a motion to have the public hearing on August 6th.
Sorry.
All in favor? All right, approval of county audit report and personnel information report.
The personnel report, we have all the pool people, so it was a big one this year, this month.
I'm listening for the traders' monthly report and personnel information report.
I have approval of county auditors made 2020 annual monthly financial report.
That's on there. What's that in the emails?
I make a motion that we approve the county auditors.
All right, we have two certified revenues that is over, juvenile probation.
The juvenile probation one is, they had that 2020. They have the 2022 GMC, it has on here Ford F-50, but that's not what it was. It was that GMC Terrain. That's what they have, and it was totaled out and it was the cop, it was the person who hit them, their fault because they like ran into a stop sign or whatever. And our tack went to the insurance and got back even our deductible. So this is our deductible back for the $1,000. That's what that is. And then the sheriff, prisoner, chief, we had 200,000 budgeted and all of this, 33,948.32 is the additional revenue over the 200,000. So we're certifying that revenue.
I make a motion that we certify the revenue.
All in favor? All right, approval of line item transfers and budget amendments.
There is one of each, I think. Yep, there's a golf course one. There's a golf course one for $5,500 in two minutes repair out of utilities. The other one, I think, is only a PDA.
The.
Yes, it's the non-departmental for the property insurance, but due to the number of claims that we had last year and the year before because of the hail damage and all of the roof repairs, our premium went up this time. And this is over what we had budgeted, the $39,513. So we discussed that, I think, a couple of weeks ago in here, but this is an example of what we were talking about. Here's the other original.
Thank you.
And that's all we have on those.
All in favor? Approval of county payable.
County's payable is $1,203,741.04.
My motion to pay the bills.
All in favor? All right, here comes the fun part. Just have a budget review. So we're not going to, it's been a time stretch. So we are not going to go over each department. I will. As you know, we have as long as I've been here, had department meetings beforehand. And it includes department head, line commissioners, auditor, treasurer, and me. And what we do is read, we ask what, what they're asking for. We have them turn their sheets in to us. They fill it out and they let us know what they're asking for. This is all their decisions, what they need, what they want. And like last year, what I did differently for you is to show increase or decrease in the departments. Individual sheet. Now, these are not going to be to the dollar. They're close, all right? They're not there. There's still more to be done. And I don't want to get too far into them. This is just, I want to do a synopsis today and then we'll come back in our next meeting and start bringing in departments to discuss. So I would be adding $800 in part-time to mine to bring that to 2,000. Commissioners court, looking at the table and chairs and new ceiling fans. We got the agenda software, so we're putting that in there. And y'all had some different increases in your education auto expenses and bedding lines. Some did, some did not. The county clerk is requesting to lose one employee, but create an election administrations department, administrator department. This would move voter registration and county clerk election expenses and out of her budget into the election administrator department. There would be some small increases in some of her lines, but there would be roughly a $96,000 decrease that, don't quote me on any of these numbers, please. This is very early. With the elections administrator, there, there would be opening, it would be the administrator and a full-time department, a full-time chief deputy. And then all the lives that go with that. So dues, office supplies and things like that. Like I said, the voter registration and election expense would go to that department. That would be roughly 210,000, I think. That, I don't have it all down because of the salaries and the benefits that would go along with that. So I've got more research to do there on both of those. Non-departmental, something I need to verify on this, approximately 474,000 increase. That would be adding to the emergency reserve fund of half a million, increase in emergency management by a little bit, increase in postage, drug screening, appraisal district fees, liability insurance, property insurance, auto insurance, public officials liability insurance. Was that really a drop in medical insurance or did, that's what I saw on there that?
I would have to go back and look at that one. Because if it was, it would have been on the retiree, because this is a retiree portion.
Okay.
So it potentially could because we, several people passed away.
Okay, all right, all right. And then there wouldn't have been any capital outlay out of, okay. So we had some in there this year, but it wouldn't be in there for next year. So it's about 474,000. And the reason for all of those increases, the postage, drug screening, all of those prices have gone up. County justice court's no increase. District court, Judge Cooley would love to add an intern program, an increase in court-appointed attorney fees, an increase in jury fees. Reason being, we don't have any attorneys in Skerry County. I say none. We have a few attorneys in Skerry County. Judge Cooley, we hope that this would be a way to bring attorneys to at least work in Skerry County for some period of time and maybe keep us in mind in the future or come back. Think it's a great idea personally. Increase in court-appointed fees, that's because there's, you have to appoint ad items for both mother and father and child or for all three, mother, brother, child and family cases, and those are heating pricey. So we're looking at about a $61,000 increase in district court. It's a raise to the lowest between district clerk and auditor for the increase in their budget. District clerk's at 25 and I think he wanted 30 years. So.
Also real quick on the district court one, sorry. The jury fees, the state law changed and it's, we, it's required to reimburse more now on the jury fees. So it's a.
JP 1, I think it was a $600 increase. I'll have to double check. Also requesting JP 1 and JP 2, a 2.8% COLA, 2.8% over, over COLA for their employees. The judge is a $1,000 increase for equipment under $1,000, increasing state. There will be, she has approved an increase to staff, including the clerk, auditor, and staff and the court reporter by 2% over COLA. Court reporter, and now keep in mind, like at the top of this first page says, requested raise are not calculated below, but they're noted. So those numbers are not in here. Court reporter, his is going to decrease by $450. He's trained. He doesn't have to do training this year. County attorney is requesting $1,000 for training for his investigator. District attorney is requesting a $1,000 increase for equipment. And like I said, Angela's office is a $30 increase in budget. And as mentioned, a 2% over COLA per Judge Cooley. And, um, as mentioned, a 2% over cola per Judge, Judge Cooley. Treasurer decreased bonds and increased revenues, or increased dues, not revenues. And requesting a 3% above cola for her office. $300 decrease per code budget outside of the salary request. Tax collectors, uh, requesting an increase in travel, postage, maintenance agreements and bonds. Everything's gone up, so, um, including postage. And so her increase is 12,100. IP, uh, an increase in training and adding that auto expense line for his truck, that's $1,500 total increase. Maintenance would be an increase in the maintenance agreements in case of a mechanical agreement and elevator, his elevator maintenance went up. So the total there would be 46,700 and we will know before we set the budget whether we're going to do that maintenance agreement or not. So that may or may not change, we don't know yet. Jail increasing food budget and contract labor, $39,000 increase in those, for those two lines. Sheriff is increasing his operating supplies, investigative expense for the block cameras. He can get some more for a lower price, I think. And then communications, he has a decrease in utilities and capital outlay because of a grant for vests. It's a roughly 70,000 decrease. Boot camp, uh, and supervision are both needing new vans, um, or newish vans.
I think one of them is.
One's going to be donated. From the sheriff's department, so the increase, he showed the increase in boot camp for $40,000 to replace that van. Juvenile probation and supervision, no increase, mental health, no increase. The health unit, uh, increase in operating supplies, contract labor, general liability and maintenance, uh, 22,500 is the increase there. Welfare, increase in indigent transportation, doctor medical fees and maintenance agreements. It ended up, I didn't, oh, okay, doctor medical fees is going away, maintenance agreements. Can't remember if it's going up or down.
I think it was going down.
I think it was going down too. So it's a 12,000, a $1,250 decrease. Child welfare is no increase. Library, um, Amy said that they can do what they're doing with one less employee. They would eliminate the book leases, decrease periodicals. They would need to increase the contract services and communications. And she's requesting an increase in all employees' salaries with the elimination of the one full-time employee. So without the increase to the employee salaries, it's a roughly 79,000 decrease. Once again, I need to check on the, uh, salary and benefits for that employee they would be leaving to know for sure. Senior center increased part-time food and maintenance agreements, $16,000, $16,500 increase on those. Youth center increased support supplies, vehicle maintenance and liability insurance, $10,500. Parks department, uh, decrease community center expenses, we're down to one community center and that line hadn't really been messed with since we've gone to one. Increase in ground supplies, park tires, contract labor, park maintenance, pool replays, pool repairs. They need to replace the sand filter system and that's, that's a chunk, it's about 75,000. An increase in equipment over 1,000. They're requesting a bat wing mower, two cabota trucksters to replace the John Deere's. They need a stove in the armory and they're budgeting to get precinct two skid steer, which we'll go over to in a minute. And that's roughly a $390,000 increase. Extension service, vehicle replacement, Derek's truck is getting to a point and he does the most traveling. Increase in FSC supplies, so 74,000 roughly. Of course, that may not be as high with trade-in value for the truck he has. Precinct one, increase in part-time, non-travel meals and maintenance and repairs and decrease in leases. You're losing lease if I'm not mistaken, so 28,515 decrease. Precinct two, increase in office supplies, road materials, non-travel meals, utilities, maintenance and repairs, building and grounds, maintenance. Increase in leases and capital outlay over 5,000, so 121,372. And the increase in capital outlay is the skids, is the skid steer, uh, accessory, yes. And the lease would be skid steer.
And a new maintainer.
And a new maintainer, okay. Precinct three, increase in road materials, non-travel meals, leases for two maintainers. And requesting a 3% raise over cola for precinct three employees. That'd be a $130,000 increase at this point without the, uh, increase over 3%. Precinct, that was correct, two maintainers, okay. Precinct four, add two employees, increase safety and training to maintain our leases, correct? And that would be an increase of roughly 177,500. Golf course, raise for the department head, full-time employees, increase in part-time clothing, clothing allowance, full fuel, feud.
Feud.
Oh my goodness, it's a lot of reading this one. Food and concessions, operating supplies, pro shop merchandise, new communications line, promotional, utilities, maintenance and repair. Leases that would increase, uh, from 12 carts to 20 carts and a new mower, uh, which that may or may not. We're working on something with the parts on that end of it. And then capital expenditures over 5,000 to include new bathrooms, computer, which that would probably go into a different one, I need to work on that. Repair concrete cart paths and replace 10 cart shift doors, which if you go out there and look at, some are pretty rough. So that's an increase of roughly 235,000. Airport, increase communications, general liability, capital outlay over 5,000 with four new strobes. Those, I believe are required, but he's checking into that, increase of 55,500. EMS is still requesting an education coordinator. He's lost his, he's lost four since doing this because the way he's been doing it is the education coordinator also has other duties. So I think he'd like to split that out to where it's just education coordinator. With, um, oh, he's requesting to increase salary brackets, um, 10 to 15%. So 10 would be the low, 15 is the high, above cola to stay competitive. And I think he's sent all of y'all something on what is going on around our area with the, uh, what they're paying and the benefits they're providing for EMTs and paramedics and the other communities. Increase clothing allowance, safety and training, education program, tire expense, professional services, dues, education and training and a decrease in communication, so roughly 126,000. All of the requests, um, on this other sheet you'll see, um, totals to nearly to an half million dollars in requests. So as you know, these are all requests from every department. This is not something I threw together, it's all from all the different departments. And so this is just the very, very beginning of where we're at and where we're headed, so.
In the books, our displaced persons spots, um, all of the documentation, I was going to just do the PDF. I did email you all a PDF that has all the documentation, but, um, some of it doesn't scan too well, so you can't fully see what they wrote. But it does have all the documentation of all the requests that were made during all of the meetings. So everything is in there, if there's questions on there, it's, and if you refer back to the email I sent yesterday or maybe before, whenever that I sent with the PDF, it explains some of that in there.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Summer?
Do you have a schedule for your budget process again this year?
I have put one out, but we, uh, we do have a schedule. So we're going to have, we're going to discuss budget every meeting that we have, every, it's first and third meetings of, of every month. And we will be discussing budget until we set the budget on August 20th.
So this agenda item is not considered one of your required budget meetings? This is just an agenda item? Because you're required to have at least one budget meeting?
No, you're required to have a, like a public hearing, but not a budget. This is, this is not the same thing as that. This is just having the department heads and like officials to be able to come in and explain or whatever. This is just going through the process.
So there is now one required budget meeting, is that right?
No, ma'am, there's one required public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing.
Correct.
For budget.
Correct.
Okay, okay. As far as these raises that you're quoting over cola, at some point in the past, many times in the past, it's been stated that one person can't get a raise unless everybody gets raised. So where's that going to play into all these other departments that you haven't mentioned, a percentage over cola?
We haven't even started yet. This is just what each department has requested, so that's just where we're starting today.
Okay, just, just verifying.
Thank you. Okay. Any thoughts, any questions, anything on this budget? It will be more refined next meeting, uh, you'll be provided information, so. Okay, we will now, um, go into executive session and for now, it'll be just for people.
Dan? Jeremy said he's in a, they went a different route, so he needs, if you can disconnect the details. If he's on a road where he's not going to get good connection to get the text. I mean, I can try texting, but he says he.